So I'm calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. And I need a motion to approve the COW minutes from June 8.
I make a motion to approve.
I saw Lee first, I'll see Elizabeth second. Okay.
All in favor?
Any?
Well, you're right.
This, right, I got that down right in front of me. Okay, discussion, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post. I'm seeing. Motion passes, okay. And now we go to presentation of solar panels. Looks like on my.
If Emily's here, then we're all set to go, I guess.
Excellent.
Maybe, maybe if I could just do a 30-second intro.
Sure.
With the, the municipal officials have been very interested in solar panels. And so, so Rick made a connection to the Connecticut Green Bank, and they're going to tell you a lot about themselves. But it's a, essentially, it's a quasi-public agency that will help fund the installation. And there's all kinds of details, but basically, the Board of Ed would end up owning the panels. But the Connecticut Green Bank, in association with the State of Connecticut, will finance it. So I'll let, I'll let Rick take one more step, and then we'll go.
Yeah, that's, that's almost quite right. Really, really, the, to keep, to keep the town in, in all discussions we've had with the town and the Board of Ed, the folks didn't want to own the panels. We were fortunate because we were looking at solar panels on the middle school at first, and then the elementary schools following. We can do the two in the EverSource area, which are Cutler and the middle school. The other school, Westside, is in a different franchise area, so there'd be something different there. We were fortunate that when we were investigating ways to do this, the municipal assistance program came along from the Green Bank. And that got me involved with Emily, Emily Basham, and her group, who I'll let her introduce in a moment. So this, this was not kind of a spur-of-the-moment thing. It was something that sort of planned all along, but it was just, how do you get there from here? And I think now we have a method and a mode to get that. So I'll introduce Emily Basham, let her introduce the rest of the team. She'll give you some information. As Mike said, the Board of Ed is going to have to be the purchaser of the power. So as part of the, since I was doing buildings anyway, it made more sense to continue the project and that installation, although not directly a piece of the construction project. It would be occurring simultaneously. So, so it made sense to keep that kind of under the public works hat until we get there. And there would be potentially opportunity in the future that may be the Board of Ed, who may want to take on for other schools, and, and we can get into that in a later date. But right now, we're authorized by the council to do was look at the, the middle school and Cutler, which is what we're doing. So I'll turn it over to Emily. She'll go through her presentation, and we'll try and answer any questions you may have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great, and I've got some slides, so I'm going to try and share my screen. All right, so you can see the slides?
I do.
Okay, great. This is Emily Basham from the Connecticut Green Bank. And I also have my colleague Mackie Dykes on the line as well. And Alan Sabins from CSW Energy are here tonight to talk with you about the Solar Municipal Assistance Program. So thank you all for having us. So just quickly, the Connecticut Green Bank were a quasi-public state agency created by the legislature in 2011 to provide sustainable, long-term financing for energy efficiency and clean energy projects. So we leverage limited public funds that we receive to attract multiples of private capital to make clean energy projects happen here in the state, and to make clean energy projects more affordable and accessible, and allow us to meet our clean energy goals as a state. So the Solar Municipal Assistance Program is a recently launched program here at the Connecticut Green Bank. And we've been using our financing to help municipalities go solar since 2012. And what we learned through that experience is, it's not just the financing that towns have to sort out in order to do clean energy projects. There's many other steps in that process. So we created the Solar MAP program, just to make it easier for municipalities to, to look at doing solar projects on their town buildings. So this program supports, supports towns by providing technical assistance as well as financing throughout every step of the solar process.
Does that include when we take the, if they break and we have to take the ground for some reason?
Yep, yep, we'll go through all of that. Yep. So the Solar MAP team is the Connecticut Green Bank as the financing arm. And we used a competitive selection process to select CSW Energy as our technical partners. Alan Sabins on the line from CSW. And together, we provide that technical and financing support for the program. And so what the program is, is we are technical partners for municipalities. We provide an analysis of your municipal sites to identify which sites are actually good candidates for onsite solar installations. And we offer, you know, no obligation opportunity to really explore what it would look like, what it would cost to put solar on those, you know, good candidates. And then the Solar MAP team also will handle soliciting proposals from qualified contractors to do the installation. And we also manage the utility incentive process to secure the state's utility incentives. So the Solar MAP team will work with, we're actually working with municipalities across the state. So it's not just the town of Groton that we're working with to scope projects. We're working with a handful of other towns to look at sites to do projects. And the benefit of this program is that we're actually bundling all of those projects together when we do our competitive selection for a, for a construction partner. And that way, we can leverage kind of economies of scale when it comes to the construction costs and deliver even more competitive pricing for, for you guys for these projects. So that's one major benefit of the Solar MAP program. And then, of course, kind of the flagship piece is that the Green Bank is financing these projects. So we've got our power purchase agreement, which I'll go over in one second, where the Green Bank and our, our partners cover 100% of the, of the financing cost for the project. Or our financing covers 100% of the cost of the projects. So where we're at right now is, Rick briefly explained, is we've done the analysis of Cutler and Consolidated Middle. And we have looked at the, the site and have system designs and some kind of tentative costs for, for what it would cost to put solar on those two schools. We have yet to go through the utility incentive process or the competitive selection for a construction partner. So what we're showing you here today is just preliminary designs and preliminary costs for those two projects. And we will talk about the timeline a little bit more later in the presentation. But for now, we've got kind of preliminary projects scoped out, and we'll return back to you later this year with, with final numbers. And so just to dive into what a power purchase agreement is, Rick was correct earlier, this is not a program where the Board of Ed or the town would be purchasing any panels or leasing any panels. But instead, you would be entering into a power purchase agreement with the Connecticut Green Bank. So a power purchase agreement is an agreement between the Connecticut Green Bank as the seller of electricity, selling the electricity that comes off of the, these installations, and the Board of Ed would be the purchaser of electricity. So that's, that's the only agreement that, that the Board of Ed would, would be committed to. And again, that, that part of the process wouldn't come until later this year. So this is kind of a schematic of, that kind of illustrates how that, how a purchase, power purchase agreement works. So on the left-hand side, you've got the installation, which would be on the school sites. The Connecticut Green Bank is the system owner. So we use our financing to cover all of the construction costs of the panels. We own the panels. And we sell the electricity, that orange line to the right, to the Board of Ed. And you would be using that electricity at the sites that were, the two sites that we're proposing. So we're responsible for, you know, covering all the construction costs, and we own the system. And, you know, the town wouldn't have to, the town is able to take advantage of some of the tax benefits that you wouldn't be able to take advantage of directly, but the Green Bank and our partners can. So we were able to monetize the tax benefits that are available for solar projects, and we're able to pass those through with discounted electricity rates. So the benefits of entering into a power purchase agreement is that the projects that we're proposing would be essentially offering electricity rates that are a discount to your current utility rates that you have for the schools now. So that's illustrated in this, in the, the chart to your right. Our power purchase agreements are offering a fixed electricity rate over the 20 years of the agreement. So as your utility costs are expected to rise over the next 20 years, you're locking in a low electricity rate, and your savings are just, are growing over those 20 years. That delta between the utility costs and your PPA costs indicated by that pink area on the right are your savings. And so some of the other key benefits of a power purchase agreement is, again, the Board of Ed and the town are not using any of their capital to construct the project. The Green Bank is, you know, providing all of the upfront costs. So the town would be cash flow positive in that first year. And through this power purchase agreement, because the Green Bank owns the system, we're responsible for, you know, any of the maintenance and repairs that are needed over the whole life of the agreement. So we're managing the system, making sure that it's performing.
Hey, this is, uh, this is Mackie. I'll just add sort of, in summary, the, the beauty of this arrangement is, you know, at its heart, the, what you're essentially doing is replacing your purchase of power from the utility with your purchase of power from the solar system. And that power from the solar system is, is cheaper than the same power you would have bought from the utility. So you're doing two things. One, you're accessing a cheaper source of energy. So you're able to, to save, save money essentially right away, because you're, you're replacing the utility power with this solar power. And then, two, you're able to, to go green, because the, the power you're purchasing from the solar is, you know, is clean renewable energy as opposed to grid power. So you get the solar upfront with no cost, and you're able to enjoy savings right away, again, because your, your power is cheaper than you would have, than you would have bought otherwise.
And you get the main point, you don't, the panels, the way they would be designed, don't provide 100% of the energy. So there's some percentage, which is not precisely clear now, until we get a little farther into the design. But, but we, it would still be connected to the grid for some power, and the rest, the balance of the power, well, the power comes first from solar, and then the balance from the electrical grid. So that'll all be worked out as the project moves forward.
Yeah, and those two points, thank you, Mackie and Rick, are, are really also demonstrated on this slide as well. So you'll, you'll be purchasing power from the Green Bank that is coming from your panels at a discounted rate. So that, the blue square on the right-hand side of this slide illustrates, you know, the, the electricity that you would buy and receive from your solar panels. Any additional electricity that isn't provided by the panels, you would be buying from the grid, which represents kind of the gray square at the bottom. And, you know, the real benefit and the value of, of using these solar panels comes, comes from that, the savings that, that would accrue compared to, you know, your, your typical electricity bill if you hadn't gone solar. This is a case study that we have of the town of Coventry, who used the Green Bank's PPA to install eight systems on various town buildings. And so we've got a handout and a wonderful ambassador and the town manager in Coventry, if you're interested. And so if there's not any questions on the PPA, I can turn it over to Mackie to just give an overview of the two projects that we scoped for Groton.
I do have some questions about, I know when solar panels are removed and placed in, much of them can be recycled, but there are, there's lead and cadmium and something called antimony and some other lovely chemicals that then can leach into the ground. If we get these micro cracks or even bigger cracks, say, during a hurricane, could those, could ten, those chemicals and heavy metals potentially leach into the roof and into the building itself, creating a hazmat sort of situation, which we then have to clean up? Science teacher, just ask a random question, not criticizing.
Mackie, Alan, do you have a good answer for that?
I'm not, this is Mackie. I'm not, that has not happened on any of the, the systems that we own across the state. And I haven't heard of it happening generally in the industry. I guess there's always some risk.
Out in the Midwest or towards Wyoming and Colorado and, you know, Montana.
Right, right, so yeah, I guess, I guess there's, there's always some risk of, you know, of them getting damaged. But we're the owner of that system, so we bear that, the responsibility for that, and the, you know, the liability.
I just worry about getting into the school and the kids getting affected. That's my major concern.
Thank you. Emily, I think Elizabeth Porter actually also had a question, which is the anticipated savings and percentage. I don't know if you were going to go into that, or whether it's appropriate to ask that question now.
We are, yeah, if there's no other questions, that's actually where we were headed. So can transition right to that.
Um, Lee, do you have a question?
I did have a question. Um, we are talking about three of our buildings, right?
No, two.
We're talking about two elementary schools and the middle school?
No, one elementary school and the middle school that are in the EverSource franchise area. Groton Utilities has a completely different program.
Oh.
They don't operate with, with the Green Bank. They're not regulated by the state regulatory agency. So we would have to do something different there. We're working on getting these two going, and then we'll have to figure out what we can do on that other, other site, if you will.
So you're taking, you're saying that Westside is not part of it?
Not right now. And, and the benefit of working with the Green Bank and Mackie is, is a soup to nuts thing. Because we don't have the, the experience in the town, plus we don't have the, the resources to go forward. So this looks like a winning situation for all of us, because the Green Bank comes in, gets involved, and it's basically from the beginning to the end. And they end up with ownership and the sale of electricity, you folks. So, so we'll have to investigate the other school once we get these working.
Thank you.
Kim?
Yeah.
I have a question for Rick.
Yes, please.
Hi. Rick, is it possible that we could include Fitch High School in this project, since they'll be working right at West, you know, right at the Rothen middle school?
Rita, right, right now, we, we signed two, two agreements with the Green Bank. Ones, well, one agreement was letter of intent that, that the town signed with them. The second one is some documentation to allow them to go to auction to gain those incentives. The high school would take, we would be, be beyond that time window, which I'm sure Mackie may go into, to get the high school in a, in a conditional accept the project. So that could be potentially a follow-on, maybe next year, whatever, if, if the process is still in place. And we certainly, they have certainly looked at that for us. And there is a tremendous capability, but we need to look a, a lot at the roofs and those sorts of things to see what the ages are and where the best places to do things are at the high school. So, so the goal is to get two systems up and operating, and then look into other opportunities.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Emily.
Great. So, and I guess, just add on to what Rick was saying, yeah, that's correct. The, the non-regulated utilities, they don't, because they're not such a part of the, the state regulatory structure, they don't, there, there are laws in place to incentivize solar in the state, but, which, you know, that's what part of, we'll, we'll be accessing that funding potentially for these projects if they move forward. Because they're unregulated, they, they don't offer those. So the economics of those projects just don't work. Or so, we, we can do them, but, you know, bottom line, you'll, you'll need to see savings in order to make a project work, and it's just much tougher to deliver without the, the, the structure that the regulated utilities have. So as Rick alludes to, hopefully in the future, we can try to work something out. But just right where we are now, it doesn't make sense. But for, looking here at Cutler, the, the question was asked, anticipated savings and, and what percentage? So this is what we, we typically show when we're talking to, to a group like this. So, but we're, you know, we're missing one of the, the key, key factors, which is the, the savings and effective utility rate, which we'll go into in a minute. So you're looking here at a, a proposed system, which is 300 kilowatts, which is a fairly, fairly sizable system. It, we're, there's the renovation going on and the construction. So we overlaid the, the panels on the construction drawing, which is overlaid on the aerial view of the shot there. So it's a little harder to make out, but we're posing a mix of panels on the roof as well as carports. So for that, you've got supposedly canopies that, that go over cars. We can, we can estimate at this point what a PPA rate would be. So this is the, the price that the town would agree to, or excuse me, the, the Board of Education would agree to purchase the power from the system. Right now, we can estimate that to be just over 13 cents. That's sort of a worst-case scenario. And the reason we can't say that the absolute price is because, as you can imagine, one of the key factors in determining what that rate is, is what it costs to build the system. We don't know what that cost is yet, because we haven't, we haven't done the RFP for the project yet. But before we do that, we want to make sure everyone's on board with, you know, potentially doing the project and with the layout we're proposing, so we're talking here today. So the way this would work is, we would, you know, once, once everyone's comfortable, we'd go and run the RFP and get a price to build it. And at that point, we would come back with an actual PPA rate. We would put a cap on the construction cost for the system. That's how we get this, this rate here. So this is, again, the, we wouldn't accept a higher bid price than this. We've done a lot of these projects. We know what a reasonable cost is, so we know it shouldn't cost more than this. So, you know, we'd, we'd hope to drive it down lower and get a lower PPA rate. But we've got to give you some sort of sense of the numbers here. And then, as I was saying, typically, we're able to then show and answer the question that was asked here, what is the anticipated savings? But we don't know what you pay, because of the construction going on, we don't know what you pay for electricity now. So because I don't know what the, you know, what you pay now, we don't know what the savings would be for, for every kilowatt hour. So we can't estimate that yet. Once the utility, once EverSource has, has essentially assigned a utility rate, we'll be able to do that. So what we're proposing at this point is going ahead and, and moving forward with the, continuing to develop the process, securing the incentive, and getting that construction cost. And then we would come back with the number, at which point, hopefully, EverSource will have a, will have determined the utility rate. Of course, we, we wouldn't expect you to sign a PPA until you know that number, because we got to make sure there's savings.
I'm sorry, Mackie. If you look at the generation, the power generated, you know, we, we use, the high school, for example, uses like 2.3 million kilowatt hours a year. This building is probably a third that size or so. So somewhere in the neighborhood of a one and a quarter, maybe a million kilowatt hours a year. So you, we could be saving up to 30-some percent of the electricity. The cost, as Mackie said, is, is another matter, depending on what, what category the electric company puts in and how much they charge, and that, that sort of thing to develop the savings. So just so you kind of get a feeling, as I mentioned earlier, it doesn't provide all the power, but it could provide some. And it, this process that the Green Bank came up with, with putting the awnings, if you will, or the carports up in the top of the drawing, really allowed them to almost triple the size of the solar panel installation at that school, which is really tremendous. So we appreciate that effort, by the way.
Yep, so again, unfortunately, can't answer the most important question, which, what, what are the save, anticipated savings? But once we have that information from the utility, we'll have that. And again, we wouldn't, wouldn't expect anything to, to get set in stone here, any agreements to be signed, until, until we have that number and know that everything makes sense. Next slide. Next is Consolidated Middle School, another similar system size, 300 kilowatts. So you get similar production. We do think, because there's more on the roof here, this, this system would be a little cheaper to bid or build. As you can imagine, it's, it's cheaper to, to put solar on a roof than it is to do a carport, because you have to essentially build a structure to put the solar on top of with the carport. So here, you got more on the roof, so a little lower cost, so a, a lower anticipated PPA rate of 10.7 cents. I should say that we've, we've done a, a number of carports around the, around the state. We're doing, we have increasing interest in them. You know, aside from the benefits of the solar, the green power and the cheaper power, you, you get shading on cars during the, during the summer, so they don't get as hot. You've got protection from the snow in the winter. So, you know, we've got a very large one at the Woodbridge, JCC, West Farms Hall, and, and West Hartford Farmington is in the process of putting one in. And feedback we get from, from people who use the buildings that have the carports are all very positive for, for those reasons, shovel the snow up their car when they, when they come out in the winter. And all the cost of building those structures is incorporated into our financing. So they're, you know, just like the panels, there's no upfront cost to the town for, for building any of that. They're, you know, just like the panels, there's no upfront cost to the to the town for for building any of that. So we, uh, just real quick here, some of the numbers around based on the, uh, the power production of the the system and. Displacing the, uh, the brown power that would be bought from the utility, uh, just the, uh, the environmental and and public health. Value, uh, created by that, uh, clean power. Uh, so almost a million dollars of public health value created across the. The lifetime of the solar panels, over a thousand tons of carbon emissions, and then you see the the. Tree growth equivalent and the, uh, the car miles equivalent. And next slide. So in terms of next steps, uh, we would go and secure those utility incentives. Uh, there's a, uh, sort of a tight or strict timeline around when we're able to do that. Uh, it's a, it's an auction. You have to submit by July twelfth. So, uh, we need to get that in, and then they'll tell us in August whether we get them or not. Uh, so. That point, if we with the incentive at hand, then we would go out and and run the RFP for contractors. Uh, determine the pricing to build the system, and once we have all those inputs, our incentive and our our build costs, we can come back to you. With that actual, uh, power purchase agreement with the the price in there and, uh. You know, and and hopefully, at that point, we'll have the utility cost and we can make the decision, uh, as to whether to move forward. And then assuming we do, we'd like to start building the system in the beginning of twenty twenty one.
Kim, I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, my question is, um. It says building owners on the website for Connecticut government that if if it's a Connecticut Green Bay. C pays financing for qualified energy saving, you could receive up to three. Let free electric vehicle charging stations for their property. Would you be able to do that at one or both sites? I think you're muted.
Thank you. Um, that that offer is, uh, is for energy efficiency projects, uh, not for. For solar projects. So unfortunately, we could not do it in this case.
Oh.
Sorry. And this also wouldn't be CPAs, but but yeah, so, sorry.
It's not a C. It's not. What which one does it qualify under for the Connecticut Green Bank?
This is our, uh, our, uh, power purchase agreement program.
Power purchase agreement.
C CPace is a completely different program.
Different, different program.
Uh, yeah, completely, completely different. It's it's for upgrades. It it helps, uh, businesses, if you will, because it's a commercial. Uh, energy. So we are, however, we are, we are, however, putting, uh. Charging stations in each of the schools. We have enough for, uh. Uh, I'm trying to think, six or twelve cars at the middle school, plus we have some at each of the elementary schools. We are installing charging stations. As part of the projects.
Will they be solar powered?
The power will come from whatever provides it, not necessarily directly from solar, but. Of course, it will be solar if if that's all the power is required for that day, I guess. You know, maybe in the summer, it's, we're not using much power or some off hours or some or something, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Not individually solar powered, if you will.
Thank you.
Gretchen?
Who pays for the energy that the individual is putting the into their car? The rest of us go to the gas station. We pay the gas station money. For the gas that we're using. When people go to the different charging stations around town, who's paying for the?
The the way, the way the grants work for those that are installed now, Town Hall Library and. Up here at the annex, part of the grant requirements was that the energy was provided at the town's cost and not the cost of the individual. Uh, driver, if you will. There was some period of time that that was allowed. I'm not quite sure what that is because they've been in some period of time. So that's something we we would look into. At at the schools.
That's a taxpayer, if you, you know, are we paying?
I understand. Yep, understand.
Just trying to keep it fair.
Yeah, I understand.
Love the fact that you do it, Rita. I just want to make it fair for everybody.
I believe it is fair for everybody in for the whole town.
Is it, um, Rick, is it? So is it the permanent school buildings project and then it kind of slides?
No.
Or is it?
It's it's Public Works Project.
The Public Works, okay, all right.
Basically, a Public Works Project, the the permanent school billing committee projects are actually Public Works Projects, and they're assigned as an oversight role. So.
Okay.
Yep, so that's why it 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 looked better because, uh, working with with Sam Kilpatrick and the superintendent. It looked like, uh, it was easier for us to coordinate these things as add-ons to the project. And it kind of falls under my sustainability role anyway. So.
Okay.
So so we're 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 taking them on initially.
And then ev- eventually, it would be transferred over to Sam's crew?
Well, if if additional projects are are looked at down the down the line, I would hope to get these, uh, two. Installed particularly since if we're starting in twenty twenty one of the summer. The other elementary school, Cutler, is just finishing up at that point. So potentially, we could have panels installed in that building when it opens. Um, the other one, uh, the middle school would have to be an add-on on that that summer, so they wouldn't necessarily have them the first year. But hopefully, the second year, that would work out.
Okay, I just, I was just trying to figure out sort of what the board's role in.
Well, right, right now, right now, the board's role is the power off-taker is 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 some, you pay the utility bill, basically.
Okay. All right. I just was just trying to put this together. Thank you.
Understand.
Are there other questions from members of the board? I am really sorry. I'm scrolling because it's only one. Dr. Grinear.
I I just wanted to know, Rick, has, uh, Amy Samuelson or Joe Banks weighed in on building the carports?
Um, not yet. We have talked to the planning department, uh, and they're enthusiastic about that, uh, because it is is something different. Uh, they will, as necessary, right now, we don't have precise locations or designs, but once we get to that point, we'll have to do some coordination. With, uh. With the planning commission. In fact, it'll probably be a site modification or or even a separate project for the middle school. And it could potentially just be a site plan modification for, uh, the other school. But we have talked to the architects about the roofs, the ability to support the panels and that sort of thing, so they've weighed in. To that extent at this point on the rooftop units.
Great.
Any other questions? Lee?
Um, I do. Um, I have just a question about Green Bay, Green Bay Day in general. How long is, how old is this company?
Uh, the Green Bank was, uh, the law that created us was passed in July of twenty eleven. But the the organization, uh, had existed just with a previous, uh, mission from the state. For, I think about ten years prior to that. We were the Connecticut Clean Energy Fund.
Yep.
Before.
Okay.
Uh, and then the state said, don't give money away for solar. We want you to become a bank. Uh, and so changed our mission and our name.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so it started out as CFI, like, like, uh, Mackie said, and we had talked with them very early on and, uh. Things didn't quite come together like they are now.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Andrea?
What happens after twenty years?
There's a couple, there's three different options. Um, one, you can, uh, extend. The power purchase agreement, so decide to for five more years to continue purchasing power from us. Uh, so we would continue to own the system. Uh, we're, we can do that for another, for twice, so we could extend it another ten years. Uh, the second option is to buy the panels from us, uh, at whatever the, uh, fair market value of them is. At that point. Uh, and then the third is for us to come take them off. And and that's at our cost.
One last question. Uh, what's your your, uh, history with how long they they last? Twenty years?
The the manufacturers will warranty them for twenty years for the panels. Um, there's one other major piece of equipment in there called an inverter. Those warranties are between ten and fifteen years. Um, so we factor in, we figure at some point, uh, throughout the twenty year term of the power purchase agreement, we'll have to replace those. And that's again, that's at our cost. Uh, we have every, we don't get paid unless the system is producing. So we have every incentive to make sure it is working because you only buy what the system produces. So, uh, we factor in those inverter replacement costs. Um, but again, the the panels are are warranted for at least.
Thank you.
Kay?
Uh, yes. Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you. We, um, this was a really hot button issue with with many of us and and with. Uh, the public.
Yes.
The panels go on this new school and it's fantastic if we can expand it beyond that. Um, I may have missed this along the way, but what kind of timeline are we looking for? And then does it come to the board? Uh, to approve this, Rick, or is this a, um, is this something that's approved by the town?
Agreement, we can't move forward without the power purchase agreement for installation and that sort of thing. So that's something that the. Board of Ed would have to review. I do believe I've provided a copy of one previously, which I can, again. Provide to the superintendent if, uh, you guys want your attorney, for example, to start looking at it to see what it says. But, uh. The the fact that the panels are being installed and you're the off-takers of the power. I, you would have basically have the final say on this because if the power purchase agreement doesn't work for you, then then we don't have a project, basically.
Gretchen? You need to be unmuted.
That's what happens when I think. Uh. So you've changed from the Connecticut Clean Energy Fund and your model and business model and mission have changed. And you've become Green Bank. Suppose the state comes around again and says, we want you to change again before the twenty years are up. What happens then? Like you guys disappear. Throwing things at you, sorry. Uh, the state's not going to fund you. You're gone. Bye-bye. All done. Because it does.
Yep, so that's the.
Being you like this.
The beauty, no, it's 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 a good question. Um, the, uh, so there's a couple of different answers. So one, the beauty of of, uh, the level, the legislature has a lot of powers. And they can do a lot of things, but the one thing they can't do is break contracts. Um, so, uh, the PPA, uh, will. The in the the requirement to, uh, to honor that contract, uh, will will be in place. So. Um, they can get rid of the Green Bank, uh, but the state will then have to find some other way to. Uh, some other entity to fulfill the Green Bank's role in the in the contract.
So whether the Green is there or not, basically hold a contract with us and will come back and. Fulfill your portion of the contract?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up a little, um, but.
So they believe this, you're, what, your entity is dissolved. No matter what, we have a contract with the state that says they'll come and do, take over. There should be some fancy word that I'm missing.
It's of the the kind, so we, so this, that's a good segue. The other, uh, you know, I said there are several reasons, there are several parts to this. The other is, uh, we we partner, as I think Emily Emily talked about, uh, when she was introducing us. We tried to, everything we do is through public-private partnerships. Uh, we want to get as much private money in to do this. Uh, and not rely all on public money. So we have, uh, and and Frank, we. Because of the tax, uh, credits that are at play here, just like y'all, we don't pay taxes either, so we have to partner with private investors to monetize those. Um, so we will have, uh, private and other nonprofit investors alongside us. Um, so, uh, I mean, to be frank, a power purchase agreement with a. With the Board of Education and municipality is a, is a great, it's, that's a great, it's a great contract and a great asset. From an investor standpoint. So. They would, they would love, anyone would love to have that asset. So, uh. Assuming we go away, uh, the state would have to find a way, our would have to find a way to, uh, to honor. Their portion of the contract. There's really not much at that point because we've put the money in. You've gotten the money out of us to to build your system. Uh, what you want is the O and M. Uh, our private partners at that point will be more than willing to step in. And take any money that might have gone to the state and take it themselves because, as y'all well know, boards of education pay their bills. They pay their electric bills. Uh, everyone, you know, investors know that. Um, and so, uh, they're they're attractive contracts. So.
Good question. Good question, Gretchen. Thank you. Um, I do know that, um, Jay has one more follow-up, but Jay, before I recognize you. I just want to make sure that Liz, um, or Jane, um, I believe have had a chance to sort of. Sorry, I'm like, everyone's still moving around.
So I'm set. Thank you, but I don't have anything else.
Thank you very much. Jane?
I'm all set. I'm listening. This is new territory for me.
Okay, great. I just, I I wanted to make sure that your voice was heard. Jay?
It is a quick question. So obviously, we can't take a vote tonight. We're in a COW. Um, at this point, um, is this something that? Uh, Dr. Grinear can agree with them to move forward? And is there any cost involved with coming up with this, uh, proposal?
Uh, I'll I'll answer that. Uh, no, we've done what we needed to do, um, as far as commitments by the town. You know, we had to show ownership with the property, which the town manager signed for for these properties, so they could go forward and look at the. The Z-Rex and and the L-Rex and those those opportunities for partial funding of the project. So the Board of Ed should have no action, and of course, we keep, uh, Dr. Grinear informed along the way as the design unfolds. But until we get to the point, uh, of the actual PPA, there is no other action really required. By by the Board of Education, to my mind.
Thank you. That's a good question.
Jay, I I I believe we would have to see the the estimated cost savings before the.
Exactly right.
If I'm not hearing any more questions, I would like us to move on to our next agenda item. Thank you very much for coming in. I'm sorry that I missed the very beginning of your, um, presentation, um, but I'm excited, um, that. I know there's many people in this town who've been very excited about moving towards, um, having a mix solar. So thank you very much, Rick, and your crew.
And we'd like to thank the Board of Ed for allowing us the opportunity to come talk to you about it. Uh, like you say, it has been of interest around the town. It has been of interest. To us since the beginning of the projects. So having the opportunity to move forward and be able to discuss it with you folks is is really amazing. And it will keep Dr. Grinear cut in and he can provide information as we move forward on it.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. So I'm going to move us on to our next, uh, Mike?
I was just going to introduce it when you're ready.
So I'm going to, um, move on to our next, uh, agenda topic, which is about the neighborhood area for elementary school for Cutler West Side. Mr. Zubba, have you missed us? Tell us that you have.
It's been way too long. I've seen a lot of familiar faces. It brings back a lot of good memories of, uh, working on the ground twenty twenty plan. And it's, uh, almost ama- it's amazing to hear that we're talking about solar panels, getting put on buildings and. Going through the process of figuring out how we're going to fill out those buildings. So it's been a long time coming. I hope everybody's happy with, uh. Where everything is so far. I think it's a real great project and probably one of the best ones that I've ever worked on in the state.
Mike, uh, once again, just, uh, I know, Dr. Grinear, you want to sort of do the intro introduction, um, but for those of us, um, who didn't know. Um, Mike Zubba and his, um, company were heavily involved in really helping us put together our twenty twenty with our. Um, our campus middle school, um, and our two elementary schools and doing and helping us think about, um, several years ago, but we districting. Uh, sorry about using that word. Um, but, um, and and all that. And once again, you were a partner to the Board of Ed and to the twenty twenty. Plan. So Mike, it actually. So Mike, it actually, it's like, it's good to see you and I'm, I'm liking what's like on this face of yours here, sir.
I know, I, my wife says I can only keep any kind of facial hair until I head back into the office, which would be a couple more weeks, but I'll be there.
All right, all right, so take it away, Dr. Grineer and Mike.
Well, I, I just want to remind the board that when, when we, we, we realized that there were three, three schools, uh, that we will be closing in, in June of, of, uh, 2020. We realized that those, excuse me, I don't know why I'm having feedback here. We realized that those schools needed a neighborhood, uh, to which the children would be assigned. And, uh, so Malone and McBroom, Mike Zubba in particular, had done a, a great deal of work. So if you remember, a couple of months ago, I requested permission to have Mike, uh, and his colleague, Pat Gallagher, do some, uh, do some studies. And, and basically what I was hoping, and they'll go through a, a brief PowerPoint, is that we would take the three schools, S.B. Butler, Claude Chester and Mary Morrison, the three that, uh, the board has voted to close, uh, to take a look at those neighborhoods. And we tried to, uh, I was hoping that we would not disrupt the neighborhood, uh, areas for the, the schools that will remain open, which is to say, uh, Catherine Kolnowski, Northeast Academy and Charles Barnum. Uh, and so they've done, they've done some analysis and we've had some preliminary talks, but I'll, I'll let them explain it. I, I, I think they've got a, a, a very comprehensive look at, at our, our town. And hopefully, uh, they can, they can explain it and impress we could take those into consideration.
Dr. Grineer, before they start, um, how does this relate to or coincide or weave into the conversations that, um, you, Sue and others were having, um, in terms of looking at demographics in terms of making sure that we have racial balance? How are these two plans, um, connected?
Well, the, the two plans, uh, are, are connected. The, the, the first thing is, of course, we, we definitely want, as, as part of our plan, to have socio-economically balanced schools. But you know that Claude, uh, excuse me, the school that's, that's being built at Cutler is what the, the state has defined as a diversity school, uh, which is allowing Grotton to get eighty percent reimbursement because it, it is replacing a school that was racially imbalanced. So we are, we are under state order to achieve racial balance. And, and Mike, uh, and, and Pat knew that and worked very hard. We, we actually wanted a plan that would bring racial balance to all of our schools. But the, the, of, of course, the, the first thing the state's going to look at is make sure that the Cutler side is racially balanced.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Mike?
All set, Mike, thanks, Mike. Um, so Pat Gallagher and I are going to, uh, tag team the presentation. Um, Pat, are you, you able to, uh, share your screen?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. So as we're kind of coining our work we're doing now, it's really the neighborhood plan. And that's something that was, you know, really important to us as we began looking at, um, just exactly how can we populate the new schools while retiring some of the older schools in town? And really, as Dr. Grineer put it, how best can we minimize some of the disruption? So with that, Pat will pop on over to, uh, slide two and talk about some of the criteria. So as part of any process where we go through planning, whether it's a reconfiguration or, uh, rezoning or redistricting, we really want to have some key parameters of things that we know are important to your community, as well as what are some of your desired outcomes, um, at the end of the day, once this is adopted. Um, so we're constantly looking ahead to that fall 2021 window of being able to get the kids in the building and about a year and a half from now. Uh, we know it needs to support the Grotton 2020 plan. And there was a lot of, um, nuances and a lot of moving parts within that plan, um, that you've, you've successfully navigated. And to be able to get you guys off of that, um, state racial balance report, um, and no longer have to be drafting the racial balance plans, as well as to be able to attain the, uh, status that the elevated grant reimbursement for, um, Cutler School Building Project, um, provided. Um, looking back a few years, um, you know, the question may arise of, well, Cutler was never, you know, imbalanced as an elementary school. Well, what happened with the consolidation of, um, of Claude Chester School? Um, that dollars for the construction and that racial diversity grant was moved on over to the, uh, Cutler School as part of this project. So we really wanted to be able to take it as an opportunity, especially with so much change going on, was to really right-size, um, each of the elementary school facilities, um, to be able to support your new platform and landscape, but also to provide some flexibility as you further define and evolve your magnet programming within the district. We wanted to be able to have some growth into that. And as Pat will touch on later, to be able to use that blend of neighborhood and magnet school as a way that you can sort of manage your, um, manage your attendance, um, not only from a class size standpoint, but also from a racial balance standpoint going forward. Even though we have it as number five and six, um, it was really our most important criteria as we began looking at these. A way to minimize disruptions to students and families. That's something that, you know, has always been important to us as a firm. It's important to us as we get into these plans and really look for ways to create some better geographic proximity while not disrupting as, while disrupting as few families as possible. So, you know, it's easy to say we're going to achieve every criteria with an A plus score, but we really do our best to be able to strike a balance. And I think, you know, that's what we were able to accomplish tonight for the, uh, draft plan that we're going to share with you all this evening. Next slide, Pat. So this is just really a, a, a look at where you're at today. Um, and this even includes, you know, your current landscape of schools, but includes Pleasant Valley going back to 2017 when that was, that was closed, um, to where you're really going. Um, so, you know, really shrinking that portfolio and realigning that portfolio of elementary schools, elementary classrooms, so that at the start of the 21 school year, you'll be a five-school system with the two new schools at, uh, at Westside as well as Cutler and the retirement of a majority of some of the older schools in the community. Um, so really a complete realignment of, uh, of the educational landscape in Grotton, where if you really look in history and look back to the 60s, 70s and even into the 80s, you were a collection of very small, um, elementary schools that based on some state mandates, as well as, um, some budget challenges are tough to operate in today's environment. Um, next slide, Pat. So as part of this plan, I'm just going to reflect back just a little bit. I won't get into a lot of the details of just the racial balance law. It's outlined in the state general statutes. Um, it's really predicated off of your, um, district-wide average for like grades. So, you know, Grotton, based on the preliminary October numbers, which the state typically issues a report in May, but I imagine the, uh, COVID has kept that report from getting out just for a lack of staff. But Grotton overall for the elementary schools is about forty-seven point four percent minority as the state defines it. Um, we'll touch a little bit later on, on what some of the different neighborhoods are. But really the state, Pat, just one second on that one. The state has two levels. Um, we have the impending balance, which is basically you're put on a list and you're required to be cognizant of it, but no corrective actions necessary. And then there's also the racially imbalanced is when you become greater than twenty-five percent deviation, which is plus or minus from the district-wide average. That's when, um, you have to craft a racial balance plan, have to present it to the State Board of Ed. And that was one of the key components, um, to the Grotton 2020 plan and getting the higher reimbursement for that Cutler School project was the, uh, Grotton Board of Ed did have a plan in place that specified the type of construction that you're doing now and that we're talking about as part of this master plan. Next one. So we took a deeper dive and it's been a few years since I looked at demographic data. Um, we really wanted to take a look at if there's any major changes in the neighborhoods and really look at some planning blocks. So as, you know, we go through this process of reorganizing the elementary schools, uh, we want to do it at a, a, you know, fairly coarse level to get a general feel for what we can typically accomplish. And I think one of the things that came out of it when we ran our analysis and, you know, we did this based on the, uh, on, on census block group level. So taking your localized data and applying it to a, a mid-sized geography. Um, next slide, Pat. You know, we clearly, we clearly can, you know, lay out your, uh, your discrepancies or your diversity across the community. And, you know, what we're showing on this map are all areas in gray. You know, they're within that plus or minus fifteen percent of your district-wide average for your elementary schools. So a large part of the military housing as well as the city of Grotton, um, going all the way over to, you know, getting into quantum claims there. Um, and then a, a probably, you know, a good forty, fifty percent of your community is colored in yellow. So when we look at those various neighborhoods, um, they're all falling within that sort of impending, that fifteen to twenty-five percent, um, imbalance at, at various levels. And what we're showing on the map is not your imbalance, but your absolute, um, percent minority in each of these areas. And the last category, as I said, goes in both directions. So we're looking at some of your mo, your most diverse areas in Branford Manor, um, where it's close to eighty-seven percent minority, Long Hill, um, seventy-six percent there, to all the way over to Grotton, Long Point, No Ancomistic, which is in the opposite direction. So, you know, we have twenty-five percentage points high and we have twenty-five percentage points low. And then we have a whole bunch in between. And what we're looking to do is we're trying to craft a plan that minimizes the movement, but also looks at these factors and recognizes that, you know, you have to create a, a plan that is going to satisfy the state as well as help meet your local goals for equity and diversity across your schools. So as we, you know, looked at that information and discussed it with, um, Dr. Grineer and Susan Austin and, and going through some of it, um, you know, we know that we have to be able to show, you know, the balance there at the diversity school. But also, one of the things that we sort of held ourselves to was how best can we run through these various options and create some different scenarios that really looked at creating that same diversity across each of the elementary schools, um, that's reflected across your community? Knowing that, you know, we do have pockets, it will be a bit of a challenge. There was a little push and pull there between, um, keeping the impacts and keeping the areas of change to a minimum while still ensuring that we definitely didn't have any schools that were racially imbalanced and getting any of those out of the impending category that we have and ensuring that there's long-term, um, racial balance as well. So that there is a, not only a neighborhood plan element, but also the magnet plan component of it, that the, uh, that this diversity and this balance will, you know, continue for the foreseeable future. So with that, we had to be able to take a look at the, uh, really at the landscape of the schools and the facilities themselves. So what we're talking about is enrollment targets. You know, these are almost a, a planning number or a sweet spot that provide you some flexibility above and below that. Um, it's not maximum capacity. I know when you look at schools like Northeast, um, over the last few years, um, it's operated consistently above four hundred. The same for Catherine Kolnasky. Um, but really, these are our enrollment targets to provide some flexibility as well as provide some implementation of, you know, special programs, district-wide needs, as well as being able to scale up, um, some magnet programs that provide some, some, um, growth in that for those areas as well. So overall, in your five elementary schools of the future, we're looking at about twenty-four hundred seats. So it aligns well where you're at demographically from the enrollment standpoint. So as we get into the minimization of disruption, um, what we wanted to do was look at the existing attendance zones or the existing elementary school district boundaries and really focus on the schools that were closing. Um, and we have some pretty big attendance zones here. So S.B. Butler comprises about twenty-five percent of the landmass of the lower southeast quadrant of the community. Claude Chester right in the middle. And then we have a much smaller and more dense Mary Morrison with a little satellite area of S.B. Butler that was put in place as part of the PV closure and, uh, in 2017. So what we wanted to do was really look at these as our, our moving parts. And within those moving parts, be able to keep as many large peer groups in place. So, you know, as children progress from one school to the next as part of this transition, um, that they're with as many of their classmates and, you know, children that they see on the bus or at the bus stop as possible in order to really sort of soften, soften the blow of change of having to go through a redistricting. And also part of it too is really looking at, you know, are there opportunities there where we can be able to provide, um, walking opportunities for children that are, are close to the individual school while adhering to some of those boundaries? Um, we have two very different areas when you look at Westside, which is much more compact. There's many more housing units within that half-mile radius and many more children within that half-mile radius versus Cutler, which is a little bit more sprawling, there's much more vacant land there, as well as some of the subdivisions that are up on the northern, northern periphery of it. Um, see if there's any opportunities there where we can create a better walking community or preserve the existing walking communities in some of those, uh, established neighborhoods. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Pat who will walk us through our transition of the, uh, various options and how we got to the option that, you know, we're going to present to you tonight.
Thanks, Mike.
Excuse me, Kim, when are we going to be able to ask some questions? We're just sort of like rolling through this so quickly.
Yeah.
How about if we call Rita, um, and then we kind of go back to having questions? We'll have them leave up the slides if we need to kind of take a look at the maps and stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, Rita, there's a page number, hopefully you can see it on the bottom of each one. If you had any question on each slide, just jot it down and we'll be sure to get back to it. And also, Pat, I think, do we have a more detailed map too at the end of this where we can really get down to the nitty gritty?
Yeah, I, I can pull that up if, if we want to discuss any specifics.
Okay. Yeah, we're happy to do that at the end.
All right, so, uh, I'll talk a little bit about our process. Um, as Mike mentioned, we have several different guiding criteria and there's always a lot of push and pull. Certain options do a better job at hitting one criteria at the expense of the other. And over the last few weeks, we've worked closely with the administration to evaluate scenarios and then refine them, ultimately leading to our, our recommended plan today, which we felt best hit those, those different criteria. So I'll go quickly through our assumptions. We tested these using historic data over the last three school years provided by the district. Um, we are looking at it as if the districts were in place today. Um, so the, the scenarios do assume that S.B. Butler, Claude Chester and Mary Morrison are closed, even though, um, we know that that will happen until the fall of twenty-one. Um, we are assuming the new schools at the Westside and Cutler site are, are open. We also reserve space for two-hundred-and-seventy pre-K seats, a hundred-and-twenty each at Cutler and Westside and an additional thirty at Catherine Kolnasky. We're using this as a placeholder for planning purposes. You also have a lot of out-of-area placements within the district, including magnet students, administrative placements and special education students. We assume that all of those students stay in their current building, with the exception of the students who attend the three closed schools. We moved students in the S.B. Butler Attendance Zone to Cutler and Mary Morrison and Claude Chester to Westside. I'll also note that we left buffer space at both Westside and Cutler since we know that those schools will attract, um, students who live outside the attendance zone through their magnet programs. And so we didn't want to, we didn't want to craft neighborhood boundaries for those schools that put them at their capacity. But rather, we wanted to leave a little bit of wiggle room to provide that flexibility for future programs. So as, as Mike had mentioned before, we really strive to maintain, um, neighborhood proximity and, while also minimizing disruption. And there were two areas, uh, one in the Cutler and one in the Westside District, where these two criteria were a little bit, uh, at odds with each other. We had areas that were very close to the, uh, the new Cutler and Westside buildings that were within, uh, buildings that would stay open. So ultimately, we are recommending what we're calling phase-in areas. And these are areas that will eventually phase into Cutler and Westside over time. But it allows existing students to remain in their current building, um, if they so choose. They also will have the choice to move to the new facility. This would move all new students, um, whether they're incoming kindergartners or new families to the district, uh, to be assigned to the new facility. And based on availability and class size, the district could also offer to grandfather siblings, uh, whether they be kindergartners or otherwise, uh, including students who are not yet enrolled in the district to make sure that students, uh, that siblings attend the same building at the same time. And I'll show those two areas, uh, in, in two slides from now. So this map shows our recommended plan boundaries. The, uh, recommended, uh, boundaries are shown in the colors. Uh, as you can see on the legend here, the black lines represent your current districts. Um, as you can see, we maintained most of the Northeast Academy District intact with the exception of this area in, uh, highlighted here near Flanders Road, which is a phase-in area. And I'll show an inset map of that on the next slide. Uh, Charles Barnum also remains intact, as well as the. intact, as well as the Katherine Kolnaski district, with a small phase-in area along Brandigie Avenue that would eventually move over to Westside. And those students would be across the street from that building. We would split the Claude Chester district between Westside, Cutler, and Northeast Academy. All of Mary Morrison would go to the new Westside, and SB Butler, for the most part, would go to Cutler, with the satellite area being moved to Westside, and the small area going to Northeast Academy. So, these two graphics show our two, our recommended phase-in areas. The one on the left shows the phase-in area along Brandigie Avenue directly across from Westside School. Over the last three years, you've averaged anywhere from 10 to 15 students. And again, those students would have the, if they currently attend Katherine Kolnaski, would have the ability to finish out in Katherine Kolnaski. However, new students would be enrolled in Westside, with the exception of sibling preference if the district so chooses. The second area shown on the right is the Cutler phase-in area, and this encompasses the Bel Air neighborhood, which is about a half-mile from the Cutler site, so within walking distance. This has, on average, about 50 students per year. And again, those current students who live within this area could finish out within the Northeast Academy district, while all new students would be sent to Cutler. And again, even in the long-term, students within these areas can also apply to stay within Katherine Kolnaski and Northeast Academy through the magnet program. So, it really does provide some good flexibility. So, in order to make sure that these districts work, we applied the boundaries to your historic enrollment, looking at the last three years. I'll draw your attention to the utilization, which just compares your pre-K5 enrollment to that target capacity. So, again, even though we're at about 100%, we're at 100% of that sweet spot. So, we're not worried about overcrowding any of the buildings for this scenario. You'll also notice that we have excess capacity at Westside and Cutler, about 70 seats at Westside this current school year, and about 30 seats at Cutler. And that will support magnet programming in the future, including a larger magnet program at Westside. And knowing that students who live within the Katherine Kolnaski, Charles Barnum, and Northeast Academy attendance zones will very likely opt into magnet programs at the two new buildings. And ultimately, the combination of having neighborhood-based schools, combined with the, the actively managed magnet programs, will help achieve and sustain utilization in the long-term across all five of your buildings. Racial balance was also a very important component of, of this exercise, and we wanted to strive to make sure that all buildings were racially balanced, and really challenged ourselves to try to get all schools within 15%. However, there are some, some challenges with that, just based on the geographic distribution of neighborhoods, and that being somewhat at odds of maintaining a neighborhood-based system. This was also one of the impetuses for having the phase-in areas. Without the phase-in area in Cutler, Northeast Academy would be not over 25%, but very close to it. So, by moving that Bel Air neighborhood to Cutler, we're lowering the racial imbalance by a few percentage points, and providing some additional wiggle room, so that district is not having to craft a racial balance plan a few years down the line. Nonetheless, we still have Northeast Academy in that impending imbalance category. If the boundaries had been in place this past school year, Northeast Academy would be 18.5% lower than the district-wide average. The only other building that would have been impending imbalance in any of the last three years was Katherine, Katherine Kolnaski, which would have been impending imbalance three years ago, but that number has since decreased, and is no longer in the impending category. Your other three buildings, Charles Barnum, Cutler, and Westside, all look really great, all within about 5% of the district average. So, in summary, this recommended scenario largely minimizes redistricting impacts to those closed facilities, with the exception of those phase-in areas, which help achieve the racial balance goals, as well as providing for greater proximity, and as well as walking opportunities to the new elementary schools. We do have some flexibility in terms of space at all buildings, providing opportunities for future magnet programming, particularly at Cutler and Westside. And as Mike had mentioned earlier, the combination of neighborhood-based and a managed magnet program, that hybrid really is, is a great tool for the district to achieve that sustained, long-term utilization and diversity balance across all of its schools. So, with that, happy to take your questions, and I'll stop sharing the screen here, and I can bring it up, I can bring up the presentation of the maps to answer any specific questions.
And I've got Rita, and I'll take Lee afterwards.
Okay. Are you ready?
Right.
When I look at the targeted enrollment for the Kolnaski School, and Northeast Academy and Charles Barnum, they're way below the capacity for the schools. I mean, Northeast Academy, it's a little closer, because it doesn't have the whole wing that Katherine Kolnaski has. But, I mean, I think normally Katherine Kolnaski would, it used to have like 486 students, close to 500, and the same with Charles Barnum. So, you're really predicting we're going to have a lot of space in the Kolnaski School and Charles Barnum, if you're only loading them to 400 students, and 375 at Charles Barnum. Is it because we have to have 604 students, unfortunately, in those two elementary schools, new ones?
Um, no, that's not, that's not the reason, is the size of the new elementaries, Rita. I think one of the big parts of it is the vision to be able to have magnets across the board in all the elementary schools. So, we want that to have sufficient growth for that. I recall back when Kolnaski was 450 or so, I think, and that's including pre-K that, I always felt it was a little bit tight there for the size of the building. And even looking at Northeast, when, you know, looking at that one, I would probably say the maximum capacity for that would be around 420, 425 seats. So, we did leave a little wiggle room in there, and especially in Northeast, that's by design, in order to be able to have a more robust magnet program there, to draw students up, to have some of that long-term diversity and racial balance, like we've been talking about. But I think-
I, I do, I, I don't agree with you, because I remember when those schools were built, and how much, you know, what the capacity was for them, especially Kolnaski, and I know Charles Barnum at 375, there's going to be a lot of space in those buildings. I understand with Northeast that you have to leave some space there for magnet students, but I think you could do the same with Kolnaski. And I just don't know, I mean, I just think we're going to have a lot of empty seats in our schools.
I think across the board, you know-
I remember when Kolnaski had 486, and, you know, and that was about the, you know, it was built for over 500 and something students. So, you think of them, you load them as three, three-quarters usually, right?
I believe we're looking at, we normally use for neighborhood elementary schools, about 85 to 90%, but when they have a magnet component, it could be 90 to 95% of your capacity. But I, I still think it's how the buildings are being planned and programmed, based on the numbers of sections per grade. That's the guidance we went off of, I think. If those capacity numbers are truly in question, that's something we could work with the, with the administration on, and bring in the building leadership to be able to look at that. It's just a, a planning number right now, a planning target that we've been using. But I think at 2,400 seats, it aligns well with where you're at enrollment-wise right now.
But what I'm saying, my question is, it seems that we are going to have extra classrooms at Kolnaski and Charles Barnum, especially, only having 400 and 375, even though you might bring in some magnet students. I just think that, you know-
I don't, I, I-
You don't see that.
No, I, I don't see that in the number, to be honest with you. But that's something we can go back and have some conversations around it, and, and take a deeper look at.
Well, you know, it's one of the reasons I asked this, is that we were thinking of holding on to Mary Morrison, and not sort of turning it back over to the town. But if we have a lot of extra space in some of these other schools, maybe we don't need to hold it as, you know, as a transition school. So, that's my question.
Yeah. I honestly don't see a lot of excess space across the board. I think that's something that we can take a deeper look at. But I think, based on what we're seeing, you have just the right amount of space within the buildings, or the number of children that you have. It's really being able to take a look at it, and say for the first time in, in, in years here, what types of programs, and how do you want to use the space? And that's sort of the model that we went off, was how many sections per grade would be ideal for each of these learning environments? And then, being able to backfill then of, once the magnet catches up, you know, for some of the newer ones that are going to get magnets, what do those programs look like, and what does the draw look like? I think the older historic number from Charles Barnum, and correct me if I'm wrong, likely reflects the use of some of those aged portable classrooms that were there-
Right. Yes.
You know, which, you know, with those coming offline, are going to lower that capacity there as well. I've been in that building a bunch of times, and I would struggle to see that more than 400 students. I would feel that that would be really tight for that building.
And would you have, though, would you have space in each of these buildings if every school had pre-K? Like, if there was universal pre-K for four-year-olds? Or would they all have to be transported to, to schools?
I would think if you were to do universal pre-K, and you did an AM and PM, you would likely be able to make it work. I think your biggest hindrance would be meeting code for the building of accessibility to toilets, egress. I think that would be, you know, maybe in Barnum, I think it may be a little easier in some of the others, but it would require a look at the, about the building floor plan, and where you have egress windows, and egress doors, and type, and, you know, so many number of bathroom fixtures, and- But I think, I think it would be in the realm of possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I've got Lee, and then Gretchen.
Lee, you're muted.
You're muted. You're muted. You're muted. Now we can, now we can hear, you got it.
I'm impressed by this draft. I think, I think it's terrific. But, ever since I've been on the board, and I know, I think I'm, I, you know, I haven't lived here my whole life, I want our students, our Groton students, to want to come back to Groton. And having breathing space also means that there will be some parents who see our new school, our new elementary schools, as a reason to come back to Groton from New London. I like that. This is important to me, too. I, I think this looks great.
Thank you, Lee. Gretchen?
Okay, this goes back to the point, well, thank you, Lee. We do need breathing space in these schools, because we do want these kids coming back. And I know a couple of kids who are coming back because of the schools. And I'm particularly fond of them coming back, like Kim is. We want our babies home. When having children in those, the affected schools, when we rebuilt Northeast, and we built Kolnaski, as a parent, we were promised we would never see more than 420 children in any of those buildings. They could seat 450, but we would never see it, which did happen. But, that, what we were sold, those buildings, as 400 seats. So, we had space to expand. So, that, I wasn't on the board then, but I was a really active parent then, and a very active teacher then, and very concerned with the number of students and the amount of space. So, those numbers, I remember very specifically. I went in, checked with Scott, said, "Do you remember the numbers?" And those were the numbers he too came up with. So, we never anticipated having more than 400 to 420 in either Kolnaski or Northeast. So-
I, I think what we need to do is that, Mike, Dr. Grenier, is, is maybe we can have what those numbers are, so that, because I, I don't want to, I don't want us to keep on going around in circles when we just need to have that, that information. Not, Gretchen, it's not that I don't trust your memory, or your Scott's memory, it's just, it's, it's best just to have that, that factual information around that.
How they sold us, the parents that went out and said, "Please vote for this."
Okay, I got it. I totally get that. And, and I know that, that we live by sort of what was promised to voters, because we, I, I hear that. But let's see if we can get more specific information about that, as we begin to talk about that. Mike-
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get it.
Put that, that we can kind of put that to bed.
Historical enrollment, I'll get it.
Yeah, and, and just about what that, what that would kind of look like. Jay, do you have, do you have a question?
No, everything's been covered so far.
Okay, great.
Let just add, Kim?
Yes.
We need to-
On my screen. Okay, you're right there. Okay.
Yep. Overlooking the ocean. Anyway, we need to keep an eye on the, the headlines that we see every day in the newspaper. Groton is growing. This is a, a new era that we're about to enter. So, I think we need to keep looking forward and not backward.
Thank you, Jane. Susan, I'm going to recognize Andrea first, and then Susan. Thank you.
I got lost when we were talking about Claude Chester, the area that it will be, that children there will be going to. I'm, I'm concerned that in the past, in the recent past, actually, the area that, that Claude Chester and the main services was divided between Cutler and, and Fitch Middle. Now, my concern is that all the, the neighborhood in Claude Chester is not divided in that, in that manner again. So, I, I'm just lost on this map.
Sure. Let me share my screen. Easier, and we can just clarify the area that you're talking about. All right. So, we have the Claude Chester district outlined in black here. My cursor's outlining it.
That's it.
Shows it, yes, split between Westside in the red here, Cutler in the yellow, which I think's the bulk of the district, and a little bit to Northeast Academy.
Yes. Andrea, are you speaking to Branford Manor and Mather?
I'm, I'm concerned about Paquannic Bridge.
Okay. Midway Oval and Paquannic Bridge is that large neighborhood right in the middle. And if we had the more detailed streets, you'd be able to see it. That's right across the street from Claude, or what was Claude Chester. We've kept that entire neighborhood together.
Okay.
I would say the only neighborhood that has any real split, and it's just really due to the sheer number of students, and to meet racial balance, it is to keep that split that was established, I believe in 2012, of, of Branford Manor, where it split between the two roads there, just in order to be able to be in compliance with the state. There wasn't any one school we were able to put that entire neighborhood into, and maintain racial balance compliance.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Susan? Just wanted to add that I want you to realize that we always consider the Gordo Ed enrollment figures that you all approve each year, looking at those primary grades, K1 at 22, then 22, I mean, 20, and then 22 for second, third, and 24. Those are kind of our barometer. And so, whether we're looking at a four-tiered new school system, pre-K through 5, we're still looking at those numbers between 20 and 24. And even in our two magnet schools, Katherine Kolnaski and Northeast Academy, we really have to be ever so careful in bringing in our new kindergartners and first graders and siblings, so that they are also within that parameter. We don't want them, if we bring too many children in K1, then that can really oversize those 3, 4, 5 classrooms. So, we work closely with Ryan and Chris to make sure. But just know that your guidelines are ever so important to us, and we're constantly using that as the parameters for our enrollment. So, know that we're doing that with this project as well. So know that we're doing that with this project as well.
Patrick Ginear?
Pat, could you go back to the neighborhood? And Pat or Mike, could you talk about that Ring Road business? Because that's the one exception to Andrea's point. Could you come back out just a tad more, Pat?
What page?
This is actually a different map. This is a blown-up map that is the same as the one on slide 12, I believe, but it just has labels, so a little easier to read.
I, I just wanted to be.
We received that.
I want to be clear, Andrea, that everything in yellow that is west of Midway Oval, for example, that, that stays as a neighborhood and goes to the new school at Cutler. The one area that, that Susan and I spoke to Mike Zubba and Pat Gallagher about was that neighborhood that he's circling right there. It, it, it seemed like, it seemed like a natural part of where it should be going to Northeast, and it, and it greatly helped the, the racial balancing there. And so we, we included that. So I, I just want to be clear, Andrea, that's the one, the only exception. And am I right, Mike and Pat? Of Clodchester? Yeah. Yeah. So the, so the kids, the kids in that Ring Road neighborhood would in fact not follow, they wouldn't, they used to go to Clodchester, but now they'll go to Northeast. Yeah.
I'm concerned about that because those children live right across the street from, from Paquonic Bridge. And that's a culinary friends there. And that's, see, I, the one thing I'm, I'm worried about is, is dividing neighborhoods. That happened when, when Paquonic Bridge was, was divided. And it caused a terrible rift in, in the, just the whole, the whole atmosphere of, of the town and the reaction of the children. And those kids, Mike, it would be like, the kids from Wayne Street not going to the same school as the kids from Porson Street.
Right.
Only Mike understands that because we're from the same town, actually.
Yeah. So let me, let me say two things. One is, when we looked at the racial balance this year in, in the district, Northeast Academy is, is one point away from being racially imbalanced, 24% out. We have to do something about that. And the second thing I'll say is this, that by, by having five magnet elementary schools, I, I think we're going to be able to give kids a choice. So if the kids in that neighborhood, Andrea, really want to go to, to the Cutler site, they'll, they'll be eligible to do that.
I see.
If they want to, if they want to go to Katherine Kolnowski, or, I mean, each of the schools, the beauty of this plan that Mike has really been on the ground floor of, Mike Zubba, is that we're going to become 100% magnet. So the kids, the kids that live in, in the West Side neighborhood, you know, 100 yards away from the West Side School, they can apply to go to that school and will, will run the magnet program and will manage it in such a way that we'll, we'll, we'll achieve racial balance, but, but without redistricting, at, at least the kind of really politically divisive redistricting that we've seen in the past.
Right. All right, that allays my fears. Thank you.
So I've, I've got, I'm going to recognize Jay, Gretchen, and Rita. Did I see you have your?
You did, I'll wait.
Well, I'm going to do Jay, Gretchen, Lee, Rita.
I, I realize that there is no, no easy answer here. But I for one would like to see some other options. I mean, it just seems like tonight that this is being presented as the only option. And for these folks, if I'm understanding correctly, for these folks that live over in Branford, what we're saying is that they're going to get bused all the way across town, which will be a long bus ride. And we've got parents that may not have as much access to transportation at other neighborhoods that now will be so far away from their children's school. Now, I realize that the magnet component of this, this is, this is the catchment area. This is if somebody doesn't participate in the magnet process or doesn't get placed. But I just would like to know, is, is this the only option that works?
Jay, just let me, I just want to be clear, that the children that are, are going from that neighborhood are currently being bused to, to Clodchester. So they're already not going to school in that neighborhood. And of course, that neighborhood is what gave rise to the whole racial imbalance that we experienced in 2007. So, but the other answer to your question is, no, we, we looked at lots of scenarios. In fact, Mike and Pat started by saying, pretty much, well, not all of them, but the vast majority of neighborhoods in Groton would be wiped out, and we would be sending kids to, we would be redistricting. And I thought that was a, that was a, a really a cornerstone of Groton 2020 that we, we would not change, we would not redistrict schools, except those, of course, that are closing. Yeah, that, Dr. Ginear, that's a good way to put it. We did, I think, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, with the sub-options, we may have looked at a half dozen options and based on the minimization of impact and really racial balance and trying to balance contiguous neighborhoods and keeping groups together, which we've heard is important, we thought this one struck a good balance. But we did look at others, and some of them didn't perform so well in some of those regards. But that's something that, you know, we'd be happy to, happy to further share, just so you could see what some of those did look like. Because this one wasn't our first cut. We had done some that were a little bit more aggressive, I believe. The one redistricted about 65 or almost 70% of all elementary students, so that was our greatest amount of change. And the administration thought it was just way too disruptive, and we didn't, you know, in doing that, you know, admittedly, I know your established neighborhoods and Groton is a collection of all these various places, and, you know, that's been throughout history. It didn't do a great job of, of being respectful of those established neighborhoods. So that's why we put this plan forward.
The, no, Gretchen?
I'm kind of, can you see this? Sort of, what?
Just tell us where we are.
Okay.
On the page. Number.
Recommended plan.
14, page 14.
Yeah, I've torn mine to pieces, so I don't have the numbers.
Well, it is, it's page 14.
I trust you. I don't quite understand why we're looping this, because these kids are more likely to play with the kids near 117 and 184. Well, I know the playgroups that exist tend to go down past the library up to, this is a great solution. I just don't, and I know some of these kids went to Noink, so I'm just curious as to why we're shuffling all the way, doing a U-turn around the lake, the reservoir. I mean, it's great. I, I'm just kind of curious. It's a funny shape.
Sure, the area specifically where my mouse is circling right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So a couple of, of different factors went into this. A, we wanted to keep kind of as big a peer groups as we could, as much as space allowed. And so because probably a plurality of Clodchester goes to Cutler, and we thought it made sense to kind of keep that area with Clodchester, or, excuse me, with, with Cutler. Second is capacity. We did have, you know, capacity limits at, you know, Northeast Academy, where we didn't want to send too many kids in there because we wanted to keep that buffer space for a larger magnet program to help correct that imbalance. And it was about the same distance as West Side. It is, I, I agree with you, it is, you know, a little bit of a strange jog in the, in the district boundaries. But we felt after looking at, you know, racial balance, facility utilization, and size of peer groups, that it made the most sense to put them in Cutler.
I'm looking at after-school programs like Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts and some of those volunteer programs where I know that the two different schools drew from. I'm going back 20 years of.
But don't.
Okay, so we should break up this trip some more. It's really hard to pull them back together. I just don't want to have to rebuild, re-divide those troops and the packs and the.
I think you're, I think you're ahead of the game at the present moment, because we're just kind of looking at the position map, but.
But, yeah, because I was, of putting those, those things back together after the fact. So I'm looking ahead to try and figure out what we're, what, how to help those volunteer organizations put themselves back together. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen.
Good thoughts.
Lee?
Is it my turn?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, when we talk about the situation where, you know, where these kids are going to school, we're talking actually not about the children that want to go to school, it's where their parents want them to go to school. But the, by, from elementary school, by the time they are 11, from 10 and 11, they are actually going to one middle school. And, and I think that these kids, kids are resilient. Try to remember what you can remember when you were in third grade as opposed to seventh grade. Kids are resilient. This could work out very well.
Thank you, Lee. Rita, before I have you entertain your question, I just want to, we have a couple of board members that haven't spoke, so before we go into this next round, I just want to make sure that Liz or Jane have a chance. All right, Rita. You just need to unmute.
I'd like to, I agree with Jay that I would love to see some, one or two other plans and not just have this one be presented to us, some other, you know, I think that would be very good. Dr. Ginear, could you tell me where, where Ring Drive presently goes to school?
Clodchester.
Those students? I thought they, they were redistricted to Northeast a while ago.
No, they go to Clodchester.
They go to Clodchester, but they went to Cutler for middle school. Is that what it is?
Oh, yes.
That's, yeah, I knew there was, there was a split there between, with those students, so they went, okay. But I would appreciate some, a couple of other options for us to look at. And I think parents in town would appreciate it also. I think that's it.
Jay, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I'm not saying that this isn't what we'll end up with, but I think we should do our due diligence and just see what were the rejected plans and what, you know, I don't know that, that, I don't know that I'm tied to the idea that we, we can't juggle some of the, the district a little bit. I don't know if we made that, that promise, but I just think we need to look at what's best for the students.
Yeah, we can do that.
And their families.
Mike, we can, we can get those other maps and, and presentation in the future.
I think what I hear, and I'm not trying to speak for either Rita or Jay or anyone else, but I, I think what I hear is that, I, I know I'm overwhelmed, first of all, to try to do something on screen, and it's still difficult. Liz, I, I'm feeling your pain about the, about what it must be like. And so I'm just, I'm just really wondering if we can, I, I think what worked best, and Rita, please back me up on this, if this is true, what worked best when we were doing our last round of redistricting, we were just almost flooded all the time with this information so that we could own the plan. So if, if the, if the idea that this was going to be the only time that we were going to see it, it's, it's almost dead on arrival, even if it's the best plan available. Like, we have to have, I'm conscious, so I want to be sensitive to that, but I just want to make sure that since we are, we are going to be the advocates for this plan and we're going to be the ones that are going to help the communities. We need to, we really need to have, we need to see this more. So, Dr. Ginear, I think you and I can work on a plan about how to continuously sort of infuse our agendas with this topic, even possibly making sure that we have one of these conversations at the board meetings where possibly more people are concerned about and what have you. But I think, I think that makes sense. Andrea?
Since we're going to do that, I would urge you to take a look at Ring Drive again. That's my, my big concern is.
What? Ring Drive?
Yes, thank you.
I, for me, I, I understand Mike and Pat about how hard it was to do. My, my heart also just bleeds for the fact that Branford Manor is a community, and we have split it, and I just, but I get, I get it, and I will, and I will advocate for whatever plan makes the best sense for the Groton, but for a vulnerable community like, and I don't know what that looks like, and, and maybe, and maybe I'm not speaking correctly, and other people can kind of, who work more with that community, I just, my heart, when I, when I think about that, my heart.
Thank you, Kim.
I agree.
Any further comments about that?
I just am the relative newcomer to Groton, and so I didn't know very much about any of the schools, but in visiting schools, what I, what I find myself walking away with is that great things are happening in these schools, no matter where they are, the kids are doing well, the teachers are extremely excellent, educators very child-oriented, and the families are pretty happy with things. I would be if I had a child in Groton. So I think we need to keep that balance, not only facility and neighborhood, but so what are the strengths of these schools? And stay focused on the big picture.
Thank you, Jane. So I'm going to, knowing that we're going to see this plan again, as always, if you guys have questions, I think if you follow, wow, I'm going to try this sentence one more. As always, if you guys can just funnel your questions to Dr. Ginear so that he can then put them to Mike Zubba and crew, I think that that would be helpful, specifically if you have, I know Andrea and Rita and I have spoken about some of our concerns, but if you guys have like, oh, but what is, so that they can specifically address it.
That'd be helpful.
And the fly. And I think along with that is just to make sure that we understand building capacities as well, from the Northeast and Katherine Kolnowski and Charles Barnum. Oh, right, I said that. I'm, it's on.
Kim?
Yep.
Just, just to say to you, you, you get muffled every once in a while, and I don't hear what you're saying. So I don't know if you're not close enough to your mic or not, but I just wanted you to know, and I don't know if anybody else is experiencing that, but I'm not hearing you completely.
Most people are very excited when my, my voice is muffled. I am, I'm actually in route, I have a cal, I have a computer coming to me because you're not the only one that, that is concerned about the fact that my voice goes in and out, but for some reason it isn't.
Yes. Okay, just wanted you to know.
Thank you very much.
Just before they sign off, I, I just want to thank Mike Zubba and Pat Gallagher.
Thank you.
It's like they live in, they command the facts like better than anyone I've ever heard, and they live in East Oshkosh.
Do they?
They live like 25 minutes away, I mean.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Thanks, everyone. Good seeing everybody.
Thank you so much.
Bye, Mike. You're welcome. All right, so let's move on to the return to school roadmap committee. Dr. Ginear, what do you have for us?
We have, Sam was going to report on facilities, Lori and Ken are going to report on operations, and I'm going to, I'm going to have to report on the diversity, equity, and inclusion because I'm not exactly sure, but Mr. Davis tomorrow is not.
I was there.
Oh, good, then you can report on it. Great, thank you. So Sam?
Good evening. So the facilities roadmap committee has met twice so far. We had an organizational meeting, the first meeting, and last week we had our second meeting. We've got about 15 people on the committee, a very diverse group of educators and staff members. And last week. Uh, and, um, last week we, uh, discussed, uh, what they've heard, uh, what they've heard about, um, things that might affect coming back to school and how uh, that will affect, uh, what we do in our facilities throughout the district. Our third meeting will be this Wednesday at noon time and we'll be discussing, um, i- in greater detail, the, um, the idea of coming back, uh, with everybody, uh, in school full time. Uh, maybe everybody not coming back to the buildings virtually, and of course, the third option would be a hybrid uh, uh, option for, uh, returning to school, so, um, we'll be talking about, uh, all, all the things that, uh, we'll be, uh, inventorying, uh, regarding, uh, PBEs, face masks, um, cleaning materials, uh, so on and so forth, so.
Thank you.
Overwhelming, all right. Any, any questions for, um, the facilities roadmap? Andrea?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that last time we met, I spoke about how that there was a time when Fitch Middle was, or Fitch Junior went to Cutler for half a day, and I forgot to, to say that a, a whole year previous to that, they had been at the high school, so they were on double sessions at the high school. And that might be something that, just for you to know, that it's been done before.
Is, is Kim.
Thank you, Andrea.
As Kim would say, my head is spinning.
We're, we're, we're trying not to, uh, listen to too many of the rumors, but I think we have to keep them in the back of our mind because some of those rumors may become, uh, actuality before we're done.
Yeah, I think you're right. Ken and Lori, you, you want to hop in about operations?
Oh, there's Lori.
All right, Lori, you want to, you want to start us off or?
Oh, sure, I can if you want, so, um, the operations committee met, we had our initial meeting. Um, basically just kind of laid out the foundation of the work that we're going to do, put some organization to it. Um, we have, as, as similar to Sam's committee, we have a diverse committee. Drinking water, I'm sorry. So we have a diverse committee as well, um, uh, pairs, teachers, custodians, secretaries, administrators, so we have a lot of diversity as well. We went through an assessment to kind of take stock in where we are and what we learned, um, we went through the lessons learned exercise and um, had an opportunity to talk about what we feel went well, what we feel we could grow upon for the upcoming school year. Um, and then we also, um, talked about the things that were complimentary and things that we needed to retain as we went forward. Um, in addition to that, we have, um, we are surveying schedules right now, we plan to have a follow-up meeting after immediately following this, this, um, the, um, School for Change, um, the Center for School Change, uh, meet, next meeting on operations is June 24th. Uh, we'll have an immediate, immediate, um, meeting following that and then a regular schedule of meetings every couple of weeks throughout the summer to work through the planning process. We did identify there's quite a bit of crossover as we start to work through the operations piece. Um, so we do a lot of coordination with Sam's committee around, um, safety protocols, protection, equipment, things like that. Ken, do you want to add to that?
That was pretty comprehensive, uh, Lori.
We're just trying to figure out how to pay for all this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I actually think that we need to make sure that we're continuously talking about that because, um, this is going to be very expensive, regardless of what rumor, um, pans out to be our, our driver. Um, and whether we're going to have enough money from the CARES Act, um, to sort of cover that. Silvering, but reality.
I, I will say this, I, I, I called John Burt and this is, this is, I guess, a half of a rumor, but the HEROES Act, that is to say, the bill that the Congress, House of Representatives just passed and sent to the Senate, uh, has funding for municipalities and the, the funding for Groton is 12.7 million for this year and 3.5 million for next year, and the city of Groton would get 3 million and, uh, 1 and 1/2 million the year after. So there's, there's, if, if the CARES Act goes through and I'm, you know, your guess is as good as mine, that the Senate initially didn't seem interested, but now there seems to be some appetite to help the states and municipalities. So that's, and then Beth was keying me in that there, there's some money actually in the HEROES Act for education i- in, in addition to the CARES Act money. So we'll see, but you're right, Kim, we have to keep a close eye and monitoring how we're going to pay for this stuff, but we're, we're, you know, Ken's on top of it and Lori and Sam and the, the whole crew is working in, in collaboration. And, and maybe Liz, I, I know there are huge, like 65 people, I think, attended.
Eight, yeah. Eight. So, um.
Eighty, holy mackerel.
There were 65 online and then there was another 15 um, that was added, but I don't, I couldn't see them. But there's, to me, that speaks volumes, that this is a necessity given our, uh, our current situation. I never realized that there was almost 50% minority students in the state of Connecticut. And that's, that's an incredible number. I was like, wow, I, it just, I grew up here, you know, I mean, I was just amazed. But anyway, um, are you ready for me to just give out this, uh?
Sure.
If you could do, do a quick summary of, about or what, um, has happened, I know it was our first meeting.
Yeah, this was our first meeting and basically, um, what, there were 65 members online of all grade levels, which was really impressive. Um, their main issue was, the reason for gathering was to address the issue of diversity, equity and inclusion for all our students while also trying to address the current events of Black Lives Matter. And so the change was identified, we identified change that needed to cha, things that needed to be changed were systemic oppression and structures that aren't in place this time. Um, and how the media has helped really push forward the visibility of these issues. Um, we base, we went over first to give an identif, we had to identify and define um, the three terms, what is diversity, what is equity and what is inclusion? And I have to tell you, I worked in my small group and I mean, I've taught sociology, psychology and everything else, and we still had problems coming up with a, a decent, um, understanding of equity and inclusion. We seemed to be pretty good with diversity. Um, but we also looked at diversity and said, you know, this is all very layered. So we have to be looking at the different layers. Um, the biggest issue right now, the new terminology, the new term that we have to learn is called intersectionality. And that basically means we have to identify the various aspects of a person's identity. So that's one of the new terms that are, is coming forward is inter, excuse me, intersectionality, I wrote it down.
I just wrote it down too, Liz.
Um, I've got some things that I've been looking into already. And basically what we're trying to do is, is reduce through, through education, reduce racial isolation. And that's being achieved, hopefully it's going to be, one of the good steps would be the Groton Middle School. Um, we are, work, we have to work towards building a shared experience, we have to align our mission statement and we have to look at, you know, how, who's going to be the agents of change, how are we going to work with this? And so our next meeting is Thursday, I think it is, at four o'clock, and I sent to you, um, what time, one o'clock?
One.
Oh, what did I say?
Four.
I thought you said four. No, that's, that's, that's census, sorry about that. That's next week and census. Um, just wanted to let you know, I sent you all, the next day I went to a, a Cabe webinar and I sent you all my notes on that, um, I sent first to Dr. Gineer, Kim and Susan. But Kim suggested I send it all to you, I wasn't, you know, this was new to me, and so I sent it to you. And I have to tell you, the, um, Cabe is really available for us for resources, I sent it to Jamal as well. And also, I, so I just wanted you to know that, um, there's some things out there that we can use to help foster a change in climate, so. I said I felt so like I was really supporting something that was, I could get my teeth sunk into, so.
Any, uh, questions for Liz? Uh, right, hearing now, we're going to move on to the update. Gretchen?
I, I just want everyone to keep in mind, just all kids matter.
Yeah.
Don't.
Don't want kids that are so scared they can't go to school of any color, and I would really, really stress we should take a look at districts like Providence, Newport, other districts up Manchester that have been working so much, have had, been forced to work on this for so much longer, I don't, to see what I've seen in those districts happen here. I really just, with all my heart, I don't want to see kids that are scared to go to school.
Thank you, Gretchen.
So I can, I can give a little update on.
The Treehouse, please.
Treehouse. It, we, we didn't get the enrollment that we anticipated. There, there will be 30, there are 30 children enrolled right now in Katherine Kolnowski's program. Uh, and there are 40 children in, enrolled in the Northeast Academy. Uh, and if you remember, the board, the board a- agreed to cover up to 34,000, uh, I met with Jake Todeschi today and he thinks the deficit will be closer to 15,300, so it won't, it won't be nearly as much as we thought. And Susan made a point today, if, if people start to feel more comfortable as the summer goes on, we will, we will continue to accept enrollments. Uh, so I, I think that will be good, but, you know, this, they open up, by the way, on, on, on Monday, the 22nd, the ele, the elementary, well, actually all the, the summer schools will be open on June, uh, July 6th. So we're starting to have like a little bit of a path to understanding uh, how we follow the protocols, how we figure out how to do this, this distance learning, I mean, this, uh, in, in person, in school, so uh, it's actually, it's actually a good, nice, uh, you know, sort, sort of ta- taking a phased-in approach to maintaining, uh, safety and meeting the needs of the children. So we're, we're in good shape with Treehouse.
I have a question.
Rita, do you have a?
Yeah, I have a question, Dr. Gineer, I thought the state rules or mandates was for June 29th for summer camps to open.
Uh, no, that, uh, for childcare facilities, they allowed it, uh, actually this week, but we waited.
So they're calling it childcare as opposed to summer camps, but I know like the, the city and the town of Groton, I believe they're opening June 29th.
29th, that's correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Any further questions? If not, uh, Liz?
Just had a question, um, last time we had talked about future topics and one of the future topics I had recommended was an assessment of our, our spring distance learning. I would, I understand that Fitch High School has sent out a, um, an evaluation on their own, but I was, was wondering if we were going to send one out, if the district was going to send one out, because I have, um, had some feedback from students and one of their biggest complaints from the high school students was their lack of contact time and their lack of lessons, so, um, you know, like Zoom lessons, so I was wondering where, where we were in that respect.
Okay, so Liz, I'm assuming we have moved up the agenda for the Treehouse.
Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake.
I just, I just want to make sure, um, because that looks like you're continuing wanting to do an agenda topic for.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking something else, my, my mistake.
For future topics in terms of just getting an assessment about how this virtual learning has, has gone on and whether we're, um, doing that, and I think Susan, you probably have a response to that, but.
I just want to put out an all call that we have sent out an elementary, middle school and high school survey to all parents and Mike did a school messenger, so I'm just saying I still want parents to be able to take a little time to respond because that will give us really good information.
Thank you, I, I'm, and I apologize again, Kim.
Oh, geez.
Out of, out of line.
All right, on referral list?
Um, have we formed an ad hoc committee yet?
Or have a hope for?
Evaluation?
I think we're in the process, we're supposed to let Andrea know. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, Andrea.
You know that.
Yes, thank you. So don't forget, if you're, if you're interested in serving on the ad hoc, let me know, and I, I'm assuming that we'll put it on the agenda for the, the full board meeting and get a vote then, I, my assumption.
Right. Um, could we add to the, our referral plan, um, the neighborhood plan to our, our, to our tracking sheet, could we add the Groton 2020 Elementary Neighborhood Plan? To keep reviewing it?
The facilities?
Um, it could be COW, I think.
It needs to be committee of the whole.
Okay.
And didn't we add a few last week? Or we were going to?
Well, I, Mike and I have a list. I don't think it made it to the referral thing, because we actually, our agenda was all.
But today. Stay, stay close again, Kim, when you move is when your voice goes in and out. That's what I noticed.
Okay. You just don't understand how hard it is for an ADHD type of thing, um, still, I know that, um, Mike, um, I, I, I guess maybe Mike, Joan and I need to find out what happened to those items that were on the referral list and see if we can get them back, so, but, so Rita, um, I, I will try really hard to make sure that that, that is, um, that, that happens. Um, right.
Future topics?
Well, what about, what happened to the, um, I'm looking at the notes from June 8th um, that we received are from our last committee of the whole. And one of the things is a recommendation from the naming committee. Is there a chance to still be on the naming committee? I thought we talked about that a little bit.
We talked about them last week.
Right.
Yeah. But that they were going to be having more meetings and that could people.
Susan and I will give you an update in July.
No, I, no, I would like to join it. So, I mean, if possible, you know, if they need another member, um, from the Board of Education, I don't know if anybody on the board was on that committee.
I'd like to join too.
Oh, good.
I, I, I thought it was Liz, Jay and Rita were interested, that's not true?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's true.
Was that not true?
No, it's true, but we're just not listed in the minutes.
You're not interested, Jay. I'm not, you would, so I have Rita and Liz on, on the committee.
Okay. Mike, Mike, I'm interested, even if I just sat and listened to the, to the meeting, but I'm interested, Andrea.
We're also trying to contact Jim Streeter to help us.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
You gave me Mike. Mike, you did.
At least witness. I did.
Okay, thanks.
Anything for future topics or referral?
Um, no, could you just give us some little information about graduation, what time we should be there?
You know, I think it's going to take a while to get in, so I'm going to write you a note. I know it starts at 8:30.
Right.
Yes.
I don't see anyone who would know any better than I, so, uh, uh, okay, so I, I will send you a note tomorrow, when to arrive, I, I'm assuming uh, since we all have to go in the same entrance, it, it's going to take a, I, I believe, well, not I believe, I know we're going to ask the graduate families to go up the Katherine Kolnowski driveway and swing back down and we're going to, I believe they're going to feed them into the parking lot that way, instead of having everybody line up on whatever that street is there.
Plonic.
La Quonic, yeah, we don't want, we don't want to hold up traffic for two hours, so, let me find out, I, I know, I think we're all in the same row, so, perhaps you can just come and tell them, but I, I'll tell you tomorrow, I, I don't know myself.
So, Sue, I don't know where the naming committee is in its process, my guess is that you're probably towards the end, but we just got an all-chat from Katrina, wanting to know if there's other members from the town government that can be involved in it, or at least, can the, can the timing of the naming committee go out so that people can at least listen in, specifically if it's going to be virtual, I think that, I think that there's a lot of interest from our last, from our last meeting, so.
Well, one of the things the committee had talked about was sending out a survey to gather information from the community, so, we're working on gathering some information from the survey, and then they want to come back together again, so I will let everybody know when the next meeting is, I know it's not going to be before the 4th of July, so, it'll have to be after, because I am going to take a one-week vacation this year.
Good.
Good for you, well deserved.
All right, so, I'm, I'm going to move this meeting along as quickly as I possibly can, and then, Mark, I'm going to need for you to kind of take over how you want to do it, but I think what I want to do is, I think, I think I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and just to know that we are just staying to have our pictures, our video taken for the graduation, okay? So, Andrea?
Yes, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, I think at this point, Mark, could you please let us know what we need to do?